Notice of a regular meeting of the City of Friendswood Planning and Zoning Commission to be held Thursday, June 13, 2019, beginning at 7:00 PM in the council chambers at City Hall, located at 910 South Friendswood Drive, Friendswood, Texas. The Planning and Zoning Commission public hearing is called to order. We will now receive comments from the public, both oral and written, regarding a zone classification change from neighborhood commercial to neighborhood commercial slash specific use permit to allow NAICS use number 8131 religious organizations at or for 17158 Black Hawk Boulevard. Aubrey, would you please provide the staff summary?
Yes, sir. This, the Calvary Chapel Church is existing on FM 528, and they have the existing building that's on Black Hawk Boulevard. Previously, there was a daycare and some other uses in that building, but since Hurricane Harvey, the church owned the daycare, but the daycare use was permitted in the zoning, neighborhood commercial. Since Hurricane Harvey, they haven't reopened the daycare, and the church is now using that kind of as an accessory structure for counseling and maybe a food pantry. And so, we just need to clean that up for them and get the SUP for the church facility on that property as well.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak for making these changes? Seeing none, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak against making these Seeing none, the next item is a zone classification change for 108 Whispering Pines Avenue to change from single-family residential to downtown district. Aubrey?
Yes, sir. This is just currently zoned, single-family residential. It is located in the boundary of the downtown district, so it is eligible for the downtown zoning. If the zoning is approved, they'll be subject to all the development regulations for the downtown when they redevelop. I think there's currently an existing house on this tract right now.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak for making these changes? Please step forward to the podium, sir, and state your name.
Good evening. My name is Greg Corinian. I think I spoke to many of you a few months ago about the property. 108 and 110 are the addresses, and the properties are both in the downtown district, and we're asking for it to be rezoned to downtown district zoning at this time. The family, it's the Harris family. They're both retired, and this is their life savings, so they are looking to sell the property and be able to move into another location where they might get a little bit more care. There is, the property is already listed, is listed for sale. They have received some inquiries, and they're at present is a relatively strong inquiry from a user that would fit within the downtown district zoning. And so, we're asking that both properties be rezoned to downtown district. Any questions?
No, thank you.
Good enough. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak for making this change? Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak against making this change? Please step forward. State your name, please.
My name is Jane Gibson. I live at 1205 Burdun. I live in Timberfield, and I think probably all of you are familiar with the fact that we, Timberfield was not happy about the rezoning of Reach Church when it was attempted quite some time back. In the end, we and the preacher of Reach Church came to agreements that we would, that he would wait until he knew who the buyer might be, and he could present to you who the buyer would be before zoning would take, rezoning would take place. We ask that at a minimum that happen again, because as a residential community, there are 24 of our homes that I'm representing, and I ask that we wait at least and know who the buyer is, because not only will we not know who the buyer is, but neither will you, and you may end up with something that you would not want. Please, please do not rezone this as commercial. We all bought our homes 25 and 30 years ago, and it was a residential district, and now we don't feel that you should be able to come along and change it. It'll change our property values. The city has already done enough to what has happened in that area. Please consider keeping it residential to keep our neighborhood as it is. Thank you.
Are we allowed to ask for a point of clarification?
Of me?
Yes. Am I allowed? Okay. I would just like you to clarify, the property you're talking about is 108 or 110?
They're adjacent to each other.
Right.
And both of them. Both. Put those properties together, which I assume will probably happen when it sells, and you have quite a large development that could happen there.
Okay.
And that would totally change our neighborhood. Also, since the reason, since the time that we were here talking about the rezoning of Reach Church, you know that 23 of the 24 homes in our neighborhood flooded. We already have a flooding problem that we did not have before. Being in the downtown district, as I understand it, any commercial entity that goes in there will not have to make arrangements to offset their water displacement. Is that correct? That is not correct.
Correct.
Okay. What will happen to the water if you go in there with large concrete, which already is going to happen at Reach Church, and then you have two more lots? Quite a large commercial development could happen there. Please don't do that to us. That's what I'm asking. Please don't do that to us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak against making the change? Seeing none, the next item is a zone classification change for 110 Whispering Pines Avenue to change from single-family residential to downtown district. Aubrey, is there anything additional for this property?
Just, I just wanted to add, I had this on the agenda for later to give you an update on council, but the reason why this zone change request is before you is, if you recall, we discussed all the changes to the downtown district. The boundary was one of those items. The commission did forward a negative recommendation to span that boundary to include this property, but city council voted in favor of it, and so it was approved to change that boundary on June 3. So, this property is within the downtown district boundary.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak for making this change? Seeing none, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak against making this Okay, seeing no further comments, the public hearing is now adjourned, and the Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting is called to order. We will now receive any communication from the public or committee liaisons to the commission. To comply with provisions of the Open Meetings Act, the commission may not deliberate on subjects discussed under this agenda item. However, the commission may direct such subjects to be placed on a later, later, regular commission agenda for discussion and/or possible action. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak at this time? Step forward, please. State your name.
Good evening. My name is Janice Low, and I'm here to speak to the items on your agenda regarding fences. I have worked with staff recently to resolve some issues that I had with the fencing requirements in the ordinance and the clarification of that. I would ask you, as you resolve those issues tonight in two instances that you consider taking up in the future, that if in fact there is a rezoning request for a commercial use up against a residential use that exists, that the fence be a part of that rezoning request, such that that separation of commercial to residential is established when the rezoning is approved. Obviously, not the same day, a certain amount of time, but that residential boundary is protected by that fence that is required for commercial interest. In the case of the Garza development, we did not have a fence. We had the gap since Hurricane Ike, and that gap caused some issues through the years, but the recent one is the actual development going on, the, still is, in view of the backyards that exist adjacent to the property. So, I ask you to consider perhaps making the fence a requirement of the rezoning request. Okay? That's all.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else from the public that'd like to speak at this time?
Can I have to speak about?
Please.
My name is Jackie Bailey. I live at 106 Melody Lane, and my next-door neighbor is Farmers Insurance. And I have been at this meeting a month ago, and we discussed quite a few things, one of which, for the record, after I spoke with Aubrey, I am not required to put a fence also, in addition to the one that is required by the commercial property, number one. And number two, I am concerned about my idea of a green fence because of, number one, last time when we discussed this greenery fence that's supposed to block out certain things, we discussed plants that absolutely would not block out a flea. I mean, they were like three gallon plants planted eight feet apart, and that is just not going to work. So, after much discussion with other people, with, with my attorney, and other things considering what's involved here, my property value has been deflated an extreme amount due to the fact that there's a commercial property next door to me, and there's nothing separating us except my fence. So, and it's, it's an iron fence. So, after much consideration, I think that the only real equitable thing to do here because of too many variables involved in greenery, that we should put the wooden fence up or whatever the law requires. This is your law, not mine. So, whatever you require, that's what I want to go up. I want to go up, because my residential property needs to be protected from commercial, period. And I think that the City of Friendswood made that law for a reason, so I'm just asking that you enforce it, and that's all I'm asking. Thank you.
No, thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to speak at this time? Please step forward and state your name, please.
Angela Johnson. I own the building at 104 Melody Lane. The way I understand it, my property was not rezoned commercial. It's been commercial from day one, or at least since the 80s. So, just wanted to clear that up. It wasn't three gallon, it was seven gallon, and I think the second option is 30 gallon? You have it there. Plants, and the zone, I don't know if it's a law, but the zoning requirement is a fence or a landscaping hedge. So, what I asked last meeting is just that you consider what you would have approved as a landscaping hedge four years ago. Any questions?
We'll come to your item shortly.
Oh, okay.
Thank you very much. Anyone else that would like to speak at this time? Okay. Seeing none, next on our agenda is Aubrey. You'll be administering the OSF office for our three newly reappointed commissioners?
Yes. Yes, if y'all can come down front.
Can you just raise your right hand and repeat after me? Aye, and state your name.
Aye, Joe Morhiger.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Execute the duties of the office.
Execute the duties of the office.
As Planning and Zoning Commissioner.
As Planning and Zoning Commissioner.
For the City of Friendswood.
For the City of Friendswood.
Galveston and Harris Counties.
Galveston and Harris Counties.
And the State of Texas.
And the State of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution.
Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
And so help me God.
So help me God.
Okay, everybody's got to bear with me a second while I put the microphone back on. I was going to make sure we didn't record all that if I plugged it. Thank you, Aubrey.
You're welcome.
Next is the consent agenda. These items are considered routine or ministerial in nature and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussions of, discussion of items unless a commissioner or citizen so requests, in which case the item will be, would be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the Planning and Zoning Commission, May 16, 2019, regular meeting?
Motion, please.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor. Shows to be unanimous. Okay, next on our agenda are the action items. According to the Planning and Zoning Rules of Procedure R 2019-15, all action of the commission shall be made by an affirmative vote of four or more members of the commission present at such commission meetings. Our first action item is consideration impossible action regarding the Site Plan Amendment for Farmers Insurance located at 104 Melody Lane that was tabled in our last meeting on May 16. So, the first thing is, we need a motion to remove this item from the table?
Make a motion to remove the item from the table. Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor. Shows to be unanimous. So, next, we need a motion to discuss this item.
Motion to discuss.
And a second. And we have a motion and a second. Do we need to vote on that, or just?
Motion to approve, so after your discussion, you can then make a motion to, whatever action you choose.
Right. With this one, we thought that was, but yes, okay, got it. This is a better alternative. Okay. Aubrey?
Yes, sir. So, the business owner, Angela Johnson, has presented two options that were in your back-up material for Option A, which was the seven-gallon shrubs, I think it was 18 of them, down the property line, and then Option B was the 30-gallon plants, I believe seven or eight of them, that would be clustered to block the parking lot view. So, the, we did the motion to discuss so that we could decide whoever wanted to make a motion for whichever plan that they, you know, thought would be best and meets the criteria of the zoning ordinance, and then if that motion fails, we could vote on the other option. If that motion fails, then the cedar fence would be required.
So, one, we'll see if anybody's willing to make a motion, and if we have a second for Option A, and if either, there is, there is enough, and we vote on it. If there's not, then we go to do the same thing for Option B, and then ultimately, if nothing passes, then it ends up as a fence.
The fence, yes.
Opaque fence.
How long's the fence going to be?
It would be the eight-foot tall down the side, to the floodplain.
So, how many feet is that?
Is that the 355?
Well, there was, last time it was 400.
Actually, no, I think we just decided, we were just going to go to that, she has that side fence across the front building line, and so it was down that side property line there.
So, that's how far we're going to go?
Yes.
And that's the same distance that the?
The seven-gallon shrubs we're going to go.
About 140 feet, based on Google Maps.
I thought we were talking about a fence all the way back to the floodplain, too. I'll make sure we won't.
No.
Anything else, Aubrey?
No, that's it.
Any other, any other discussion? Marcus?
Remind, I don't have the computer. Remind me of the cost. They looked to me, from what I remember, about the same, right?
They were both about $2,000.
Okay. And are we going to hear any preferences from the?
Yes.
I'll stand down. I'll defer.
Hello?
So, I've thought a lot about this. I'm glad that, that we tabled it and gave some, some time to think. To me, the reason for that fence buffer is to buffer the residents from the commercial property. So, we talked about, back in the 90s, about when the, the actual home was built, that at that time was, was a time that, that we should, or there should have been a barrier put between the two, but in my opinion, if a home had requested not to fence themselves from commercial, that would have been grantable. So, to me, that, that is off the table on what happened in the 90s, and should not even have ever come into play, in my opinion.
And if I can interject there, that, I did make that discovery after our last meeting, that that rule was not put in, in place until 2001, and the house was built in 95, so, I mean, you're right in taking that off.
It never was in place.
Yeah.
Yes. And from discussions at, previous, and you can correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, it appeared that there was a discussion between the homeowner and the business owner to put up a landscape fence, and things were agreed, and, and then nothing happened with it. So, that was not put in place after the agreement, so I'm seeing a no on that, so.
I think there was discussion. I don't know if there was ever a solid agreement.
So, my leanings toward this is to go with what the homeowner would prefer as far as fencing between the two, whether it be the original wooden fence that was the requirement and in the, in the plans, or whether to go with a landscaping that is agreeable to the homeowner. So, that's where I'm standing on it.
I think we're going to be discussing this some more, but my, my suggestion is that when we put our motions forward, that we first do the one, whichever landscaping one looks to be more attractive to the group of us, so that we don't inadvertently vote against the first one, and then find that the second one didn't get passed, even though you'd prefer that if the first one did. I'm not being very clear.
No, no, I think I understand. I think.
I don't want to necessarily just pick A because it comes in the alphabet before B, if in fact the group thinks that the most attractive of the landscaping options is B, which, for me, it is. Of the, of the two landscaping options, I think B is preferred as, as a better buffer and, and more closely aligns with the needs of everyone here. So, I, you had phrased before about A and then B, and I would prefer to do it in preferential order, if we can kind of get a consensus on that.
Okay. I, I think going A can lead to B, can lead to C, can lead to other options cleanly. If you can bear with me, I get your point, but I think it'll, I think we can make it work.
Okay. I trust you. I will wait.
And as, when I fail miserably, then you jump in.
I was really hoping the property owners would come together and solve it themselves. That's a better way of doing things. Normally, when you get the government involved, both parties leave unhappy. So, I'm disappointed that y'all couldn't come to an agreement on this and bring this back before P and Z. But it is what it is. I'm, I'm not a fan of wood fences, because they do not look good in about a year's time, and so I think going towards the more heavy landscaping might be a middle ground for me. So, that's where I stand.
Similar to Brett's comments, I, I feel like we had solid discussion with greenery options as a preferred option, and now it's being reversed by the residential property owner, and I, I mean, I see your point, I guess, but I do think that the greenery option is a better option for the city, so.
Okay. I guess the only comment I would, I would make that hasn't already been made, although I have, I have to echo Brett's comment, that it would've been nice if we could've worked this out ahead of time. But with that said, the one thing I did want to note, when I relooked at this again and drove out, out again, the one thing that I did notice is the great distance between the house. I mean, it's, you have a beautiful house and a great, great lot, but you are quite a fairly far away, and at least on Google Maps, it's like 180 feet from your front door to the parking lot, so it's not, just staring your right, it's not the very next thing 10 feet away from your property. It's the only thing I would just note for, for everybody, when it, that caught me as I went out there for the third time to look at it. With that said, what I would, maybe, let me ask this from a protocol. Would this be the, the right time to bring the applicant up for any final words at this time, or after we make a motion to approve? Is it, Mary Kay, is this acceptable?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I don't think it really matters.
Okay. Well, then, I would like, I guess.
So, I do have one more comment.
Oh, yeah.
So, the city's requirement is for a wooden fence, correct?
An eight-foot opaque fence.
An eight-foot opaque fence, and we're looking for a agreement to go against that requirement or to change that requirement.
No, so the, the rest of that paragraph also says that graduated fences are allowed. If it, you know, if it comes close to a street or corner, we can do graduated fences, and that the commission can also approve greenery as an option in lieu of the fence, if it meets the similar requirements, eight-foot opaque, evergreen. So, it does allow for the greenery option.
If it meets the requirements of?
Yes.
Anything else for Aubrey? I'd like the applicant, if you would have anything further to say, if you could step forward at this time? Nothing further?
I don't want to ask you out of question.
Any questions for the applicant? Then, then I would like to give the homeowner a chance. Is there anything further you would like to say?
I also think that the ordinance has specific requirements for greenery. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to know that.
They have specific requirements, which is a certain height opaque greenery. My concern is, what if they die? Who's going to monitor all this? What if they don't provide an opaque fence? And agree, my house sits back, but you do not miss that, ooh, excuse me, you do not miss that parking lot regardless of where you are on my property, from the front door forward. So, I think that my request is, since my property's been devalued already, I need something that's going to protect me from a parking lot, period. Now, the greenery is fine if it meets the requirement of the city, but that's going to require someone to do some measuring. Who's going to take, who's going to monitor all this stuff? You know, that's my only concern. I, I like greenery better, but I started thinking about it. Who's going to monitor it? Who's going to be sure that the guidelines are specifically followed? If, what if they die? You know, what if another flood comes and they're all gone again? I mean, there's so many variables that it makes me nervous, even though I really like greenery, don't get me wrong.
I mean, there's so many variables that it makes me nervous, even though I really like greenery, don't get me wrong, so...
Aubrey, if I could ask, would this be subject to the city's ordinance? I don't remember the name of the group.
Code enforcement?
Code enforcement, thank you. That if the greenery died, it is part of the requirement of the property owner to keep this particular part of greenery up, not necessarily other greenery, but this one is legislated?
Yes.
Okay. So then, a request to the Board of Code Enforcement, which I happened to do this week on something else, so I'm somewhat familiar, even though I didn't remember the name of the darn group, would be allowed to make sure that, hey, these two died, I'm no longer getting any kind of impairment, need to replace that, and the city will step in and do that.
Okay, what about...
Which would be the same for a fence as well.
Right. It could be wood fence or greenery, it's the same enforcement.
Okay, what about the requirement of the greenery? Let's just assume that the greenery is approved. Who's gonna manage the code on the greenery? Because there's a code on the greenery as well.
We have the two options that are presented, so Option A and Option B. So, if one of those is approved, then that's the approved plan for that property. And so, she'll install them, and we'll go out and do a final inspection and make sure they're installed correctly. And then it'll, that'll be, it would fall under code enforcement after that for them to maintain them.
Plan, as you see it, meets the requirement of the greenery code?
I'm not saying, that's the vote of the commission tonight.
If the commission approves...
Request that, the greenery.
Okay. Okay, but I think what Aubrey's trying to say, and I think I'm gonna say it to make sure I'm clear, is that if we, as a body, approve that three-feet-tall wax, whatever, legastrom is acceptable, then that's, we can do that. It doesn't have to be an eight-foot opaque greenery. If that's what we approve. I just wanna be clear so that you understand.
Yeah, I appreciate you clarifying. Therefore, with that said, my preference is a fence, okay? Thank you.
I have one more question, if I may.
Oh, absolutely.
Just so you can help me with perspective here. At what point do you think your property value was devalued?
The moment that a commercial property went in. Because that property was residential for many, 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 many years. And when the house was built, and when I moved there, it was residential. There were two old ladies that lived there that died after I moved in.
I thought we covered that a month ago.
We did, we did.
It was commercial when the house was built, correct?
There was, I believe there may have been a house on there. The zoning was commercial, but there was a house on there.
That was before my day, so...
It was commercial when you purchased the house, from what I understand?
Yes.
Okay.
That's why it was important for me to ask, when was that commercial property?
Way before, I didn't build the house. You know, I'm the third owner. So, just to be clear, I was unaware of it because of the residential property that was there.
Okay.
So...
Thank you.
All right.
Any other questions of the homeowner?
I do have a question. So, what's on the table? Is the seven thirty-gallon linebacker distillium? So that's the...
Option B.
Option B on the table. To be positioned in such a way as to screen the parking lot. And as far as, which you would prefer, you would still prefer a wooden fence over the seven thirty-gallon?
Only because I can't be sure that they are gonna block it out. I can't...
That's a true statement, but most of the things that you have said about things deteriorating and floods taking them out can happen even more to a wooden fence than to a greenery fence. So I just want to make sure that whenever we go to vote, that I am certain of where you stand on your preferences as a homeowner being screened from a business.
Well, after much thought, my heart says I like greenery, but my head says I need a fence. So, you know, I like greenery, but I'm concerned about the variables involved. Number one, will it really provide a screen, number one? That's my biggest concern. I just am not convinced yet that these plants are going to provide the screen that I need. So, for that reason, I'm choosing the wooden fence.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
So, there are two landscaping options on the table in addition to the fence, or as opposed to the fence. One of them is two-foot-long, two-foot-high plants all the way along. The other is for five-foot-high plants, but judiciously placed to block the view. If you were to have to go to one of the landscaping options, which of those would you prefer?
B.
B? The one with the larger...
Oh, definitely.
You're not concerned about the whole distance, just the part that you're...
Yeah, but also would be concerned about how far apart are they gonna be? Are they really gonna provide a screen? See, that's my other variable question.
They're eight feet apart, and these trees are four feet wide, according to this.
So it'll be four feet between them?
So they'll be four feet wide, center to center, so there'll be four feet gap and a four-foot tree when they first get planted.
No.
Now, and there's also trees already there, as you...
I'm not in favor of that.
I understand that.
There wouldn't be a gap. You'd have them eight feet apart and they're four feet wide.
About two feet and two feet.
Two and two.
It's the easy math.
So it'd be four foot of plant initially. Now, from, according to Google, these things grow two and a half feet a year. So, it won't be this way very long, assuming they survive. But initially, you'd have it, if these numbers are right, four-foot gap, four-foot, four-foot, four-foot gap, and five feet high.
This really doesn't provide a wall that I'm looking for, so that's my, the variables are what bother me. I love greenery, but I'm just not sure it's gonna provide the fence that I need, the blockout, okay? Thank you.
Is there any other questions for the homeowner?
No, I have a question for staff, but...
Okay, thank you very much.
In regards to Option B, I'm gonna throw some more mud in the water. Could we modify Option B? Would we require more plants? Is that an option? Instead of doing seven, we require ten, thirty-gallon plants?
And put them closer together?
Yeah.
Now, that would...
It's gonna be more costly to the...
More costly, yeah.
To the...
I guess, this is two thousand dollars for seven, so you'd be talking about three thousand dollars, or twenty-eight hundred, twenty-seven hundred?
I don't know if that's even an option.
Well, I... Yes, please.
I ask my question, would you consider going a little more plant?
Just for the record, state your name one more time.
Angela Johnson.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was going to, I didn't, I thought about that option probably thirty minutes before this meeting started. Like, how much do I not want a fence? So I was calculating the cost of that, and, yeah, I would definitely be willing to do ten versus seven. And just, I know several of you mentioned you really wish we would've been able to work it out. We do get along, and we did try really hard in a very respectable, nice, fun manner. We really tried, so it's not that we just didn't take it seriously, or we just, you know, we just don't see, we just see it differently. And I agree with you that a flood will take out a fence faster than it will take out a plant. I mean, I'm an insurance agent, and we've all seen enough flooding in Friendswood to last a lifetime. A fence is not sturdy, especially against the wind. We're, you know, more likely to get a strong wind than a flood, hopefully, for the next twenty years. So, it just looks terrible day two, a fence does. I think, I don't know, you have a very tough decision. Sorry you're in this position, but I think a fence would look awful. And I think my property's beautiful, I think their property is beautiful, and I think we should work to maintain that.
Well, since you're up here, is there any further questions for the applicant while she's here?
You're agreeing to go to ten plants?
Correct.
Thank you very much. Let's see if we can work through this. Is there anyone willing to make a motion for, to approve, a motion to approve Option A?
You mean so that we can knock it?
I'm just asking if there's anyone willing to make a motion for Option A.
Option A is the thirty-two-foot plants.
Thank you. That's correct. I see no one willing to make that option, that motion.
Off the table.
So that fails. Now, on to Option B of the thirty-gallon plants that was originally set up as seven. The applicant has said verbally here that she's willing to put in ten. Can we amend Option B right now and when we make the motion?
To, yes.
So is there a motion to approve Option B using ten thirty-gallon plants as stated in the literature that was provided?
Do we need to modify Option B first?
I think you make a motion...
I think my motion...
We'll cover it.
I think so. Thank you, Mary Kay, for putting up with us.
Motion to approve Option B with ten thirty-gallon linebacker distillium, approximately eight-foot-apart plants.
Probably not eight-foot apart anymore, but yes.
Oh, yeah, 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 okay, let's amend that differently then.
Yes, that was a motion.
Second.
Wait, not eight feet, not eight feet.
I think they have it.
Okay, all right.
So, we have a motion...
Excuse me, just how far apart are they gonna be? Seven, ten?
Let me get my calculator.
You have a whole dice full of engineers, and they're all scratching their heads.
This is what happens when you get the government involved and solve problems.
I think they would be about six feet apart.
No, 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 no. Well, but then, the gap...
They're just gonna squish them together then? That's the...
Yeah.
Okay.
That's the idea.
That's all I wanna be clear on.
Please step to the podium, you're already there.
From the parallel fence, to the fence that's parallel to the street, to the spot that I talked with Mrs. Bailey about, it is about sixty-six, or eighty-eight feet. It's eleven spans of her iron fence, and the span is eight feet. So, eighty-eight divided by ten.
Eight point eight?
Eight point eight, yeah.
And there's gonna be some spots that aren't exact, because there are trees there per the code. So, it's going to be closer together than that eighty-eight feet sounds. Does that make sense?
Yes. So we have a motion and a second, all in favor of Option B as described by...
Discussion or...
Oh, I guess true, thank you.
Discussion.
Any further discussion?
I would like to hear from the homeowner again, whether or not that ten trees, or ten... Pardon?
Okay, go on, please, I'm sorry.
Whether ten thirty-gallon plants is more favorable than a wooden fence for her.
They're gonna be closer together, so yes. Ten plants that are closer together, that provide the shield are fine. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We've had this go, oh, go on.
One last piece of discussion.
Come on.
I was going to ask unofficially...
They left this up here.
Yeah, I know, I have a weapon there. Just unofficially, when you start placing the plants, can we work together on this and get the right location? I don't think anybody really cares too much, but let's work together to get them, because there's trees in some spots, as you've correctly pointed out, and it's not necessarily that you wanna mathematically put them the same distance apart. And so, thank you, appreciate that.
Is there anybody else that has any other comments? Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor of Option B as described. It is unanimous. All right. Okay. One second to catch up here. Our next action item is consideration and possible action regarding a site plan amendment for West Parkwood Place located at fifteen oh one West Parkwood Avenue. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Aubrey?
Yes, sir. We approved the site plan for the West Parkwood Place several months back. And on the site plan, we failed to have them label the eight-foot opaque fence that's required between residential and commercial. I did not realize that a section of the existing HOA fence that had been there that's behind the other businesses, I didn't realize there were sections missing. So that was brought to our attention. I did talk to Mr. Garza and let him know that he needed to install the eight-foot opaque fence. He would like to just match the existing HOA fence and fill in those gaps. Since he's subject to the community overlay district, we just need to approve that material of wood to fill in those gaps, because COD requires any screening to match the building. So we just need to, it's just a matter of formality, just to match that existing fence that's already there. He is not here, he's out of town, but he was agreeable to fill in those two sections.
Is the HOA agreeable to that? Is that what they want?
Yes.
Okay. Is there, Brett? You made the motion.
No comments. I'm for it.
Any discussion? And Marcus?
Nothing for me.
Is there anyone who is against it? Has anyone spoken against it being board, or is it...
I don't think so. I think just as long as the fence is there.
Just so I understand, I know you've explained it to me before, and I've already... There are two sets of fences. There is the wrought iron fence that's up against the property owner's house, or closer to their house. There's a gap of twenty-five feet, and there's this wooden fence with the brick pillars.
Like ten feet or something like that, right?
Maybe, well...
I think it's actually fifty in this area. There's a reserve in that behind those homes.
Yeah, so there's two fences, both of which are owned by the homeowner or the homeowners' association.
They were installed by the homeowners' association.
Okay, and so the idea would be that the commercial developer here would fix this fence, but not take ownership of the fence. And any subsequent repairs to this fence would be subject to the homeowners' association.
No, the commercial businesses are gonna have to maintain the fence.
Oh, they would also maintain it, but they won't allow to own it, but they'll have responsibility for it.
If those fences are destroyed more than fifty percent, damaged or completely destroyed, the businesses will be responsible for putting them back.
Okay.
And they will...
Decide at that point what they need to do, whether they repair it or replace it or whatever to make it right.
Yes.
And so, at that time, maybe they'll own it, but in the meantime, maybe ownership's not that important. It just, I get confused about who owns the fence.
Me, too.
Fair enough, maybe it's not, maybe not required to understand for this.
You called on her.
I don't have the power to, I don't think you probably do. Go ahead, Janice.
I think it's an excellent question. I really appreciate it.
State your name again, please.
Janice Low. I appreciate the opportunity to answer it, because it is a key ingredient to this entire issue. I am also the president of the HOA, so I can speak on that behalf and all the homeowners on my street. The wrought iron fence that is the actual boundary of the lot is installed by the builder as per the covenants, by its design and location. What you have called as the HOA fence, the eight-foot cedar fence that has the gap, was installed as a wrought iron and stone pillar fence by the developer Mitch Mitchell. That fence was replaced with Mr. Mitchell as declarant, giving permission that the wrought iron planks could be removed and the cedar planks put in by the builders of the lots on that street. It was never an HOA fence. The board fence was built by the individual lot owners who did not want to see five-twenty-eight that was continuing to blossom. So as long as we understand, it was never an HOA fence.
So it is a homeowner fence, if I'm hearing you right. The homeowner owns this fence.
The wood fence was owned by the declarant Mitch Mitchell. He built Friendswood Lakes. He was the developer.
So who owns it now?
The ownership is the question... The ownership is the question right now, and that's what I would like the ordinance to determine, is, is the ownership issue, that because the property was zoned commercial up against residential, and the ordinance says that the board fence must be in, your approved fence must be installed when a commercial zone against a single family zone is established, then the fence belongs to the commercial user, or whoever was last, I guess I should say it that way. So, 2002, the homes were established, and 2005, the property was rezoned to commercial. Does that make it a little bit clearer?
Yeah, I'm kinda coming to the conclusion that it doesn't matter. And so, the, the developer is willing to keep the fence up, if I'm hearing you right, Aubrey? And so, they will have responsibility for it, and, and who gets to own it is probably not as important as I originally had thought. So I'm, I'm willing to just let that sleeping dog lie.
At this point, the commercial user would own the fence, as you're privy.
Janice, while you're here, does anybody else has a question for?
Why wasn't it ever repaired or repainted?
When Ike took the fence down, it was because it was unclear as to whose fence it was, and the commercial users were going to be coming forward, and the homeowners did not want to bear up under that commercial development. It was on their own personal dollar that a contractor was hired to build their sixty feet of the fence, and these two people opted not to.
So I apologize, I may have misunderstood, but somebody said the developer was gonna maintain this fence, but he's long gone, right?
Correct, and so when it went down and Ike.
The developer of the commercial property on five.
Oh, yeah, the developer, Mr. Garza is now gonna maintain it. But the previous developer was gone, and that's why no one replaced the fence.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for clearing, clearing that up for us. I'll continue, any discussion, Brett?
No, I think.
Oh, that's right, you went first.
I'm, I'm good with doing the wood fence, that's what's not everyone wants.
And you asked my, my same question, so I think we're good on, on that. So we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Unanimous. Okay, our next action item is consideration and possible action regarding a recommendation to city council for the requested zone classification change from neighborhood commercial to neighborhood commercial slash specific use permit to allow NAICS use 8131 religious organizations at 17158 Black Hawk Boulevard. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Aubrey?
I don't really have anything, but, there's an exist, the building is existing on this property and they're not making any exterior changes, there's parking and everything's existing, so.
Okay. Brett, any discussion?
No, I guess they're just converting from a daycare to office space, but same ownership, nothing's changed there, so.
Yes.
I have no problem with that.
I just had a question about the tax implications of this. Does this now become a religious property and not subject to property tax anymore?
The church has owned it.
Oh, so it's, it's ownership, it's not use that matters?
Yes.
Really? So if the church owns it in a commercial establishment, they don't have to pay tax?
It's not completely true.
Okay, 'cause, 'cause this used to be a for-profit, I'm assuming, daycare center.
I don't know.
Okay, that's, that's a fair answer, and, and maybe it doesn't affect the vote here either too much, but, okay.
Yeah, I, I don't know.
Then I had just one comment, and it may not be important, but in your write-up, you had that the next door area is MFRH, but on the document it shows MFRM. And I don't know if there's any on-stream ramifications of this piece of paper going on to be something different, but I, I suspect that the document, the, the map is right, and it is MFRM, and it was just a typo.
Yes, we can make that correction before we send that on to the city council.
Okay, I, I don't, again, I don't know if it's a big deal, but it's, maybe it was a test to see if we really read this.
Yeah.
And so I passed and others flunked, I feel good about that. And then, one of the things that I see is why, how we're supposed to make this decision, Mary Kay, is based on all of the following conditions being met. One is that the proposed use is in accordance with the comprehensive plan, the last one on the list, and when I look at the comment about the comprehensive plan, this was meant to be retail, and so by definition, there is a conflict there. I don't know if it's enough of a conflict to convince us not to go for it, but we are changing it from, if the plan is to make it retail and we're moving it toward a religious.
Did you read that as a condition?
I read that as the.
I think it described.
Specific use, permit shall be issued only if all of the following conditions have been found, and one of them is that the proposed use is in accordance with the comprehensive plan. And then the question is, the future land use map identifies this tract as developing as retail, and are we in conflict with that? And maybe I'm being pedantic.
Is that a?
I would, I mean, this property hasn't been used as retail, we can make, we have been working on some changes to the future land use map, and we could make this a note to change when we make those amendments to the future land use map, so that this is.
You think that's a matter of just updating that, that has not been updated to reflect what the use of the property has been?
Correct.
Good catch.
That's fair.
No, good catch.
Something you correct, that is not a good retail location, it's too far off from 528 and surrounded by multifamily, and it has, it looks like they got wastewater plant next to it or something, so it's not a good retail.
That's a good comment, that's a very good comment.
Thank you, Brett, that's good. I, I have nothing.
Marcus?
Yeah, I'm wrapped up around the axle on this one, but you guys have clarified some things already. So I had made the assumption, and first let me state for the three people on YouTube that are gonna watch this, I understand and support the protection of religious organizations, right, so I get, I get that. Where I'm stuck here, and I don't want this to come across as me not supporting the Calvary Church, they're an important part of the community, I get that, I want to see them successful, and I'm glad to see that they're expanding. Where I struggle with is the protections that are afforded to them, it sounds like what you're saying is it's by ownership. This is not where worship occurs, this is office space that we'll be using, so that's where I get confused, because if you're telling me that this was already off the tax rolls, it's an easier decision, especially considering it might not have as much commercial value as originally planned. So that, that makes it an easy decision to support this. Where I get confused is if, if we're still marching towards an 80/20 or tax diversification goal, when does it become too painful for residential properties to start taking over commercial things, especially if it's not for their main and primary use? Now, if it falls underneath all of that umbrella and that protection, then it's an easy decision for me. It's just gray for me right now, so it's very difficult for me to vote on this, not understanding, was, I'm assuming the daycare wasn't not-for-profit, I'm assuming they didn't pay sales tax, I'm assuming they were paying property tax at some point in time. Do we know if they're paying property taxes now for that piece of property?
I do not.
Okay, and did CEDC weigh in, did they give us any type of recommendation?
No.
Okay. So I'm, I'm looking for additional guidance to how to consider this.
I would recommend that you look at it solely from a land use test. Don't, that is, that is your key decision right there, don't get confused with all the tax stuff, this is strictly land use, is it appropriate location for this land use?
That's currently zoned residential, commercial, is that the right word?
It's neighborhood, commercial right now.
Thank you.
And so the, I mean, the underlying, the church has, has owned the property, and this is just adding a layer on top of it, the underlying zoning, the neighborhood commercial would remain.
Right, so the, the motivation for rezoning it is where I'm struggling. Why rezone it now? What are they getting out of it?
Well, so the daycare use that the church was operating before was allowed under the neighborhood commercials, so we didn't have to do a zone change at that time, but they've since changed the use of the building, and so now, we need to consider this own change.
I mean, the property tax here is probably pretty small considering, so, just, it's, I feel like I don't have enough information to understand the impact of changing this, so. So, I'll leave it there and, and here.
Thank you, Lisa.
Aubrey, I'm a little unclear, so as a neighborhood commercial, office building is not a permitted use?
It's the, since it's, it's a religious organization, since it's an accessory use to the church, it falls under the 8131, it's not just an office building.
I guess I had one more that, that wasn't asked, one of my concerns is that as a daycare, it was mainly used during the daytime, but what they're asking for is a zone change, they could, they could literally use this as a church, I mean, they could use it for evening activities, I'm just thinking about this, but, but, single-family residential and other family residential that this, you know, they could become, it's not likely to become a nuisance, I don't assume, but if we approve this, they could hold church services, they could hold evening activities, is that correct? I think that's right.
Yeah, I think the size of the building would limit.
Sure.
I mean, their activities there, they do have the eight foot screening adjacent to the residential already, it's existing, and there's, I believe they have the landscape buffer as well, that's required adjacent, you know, since they abut the single family and multi-family.
You sent out the others to folks, right, that are around there?
Yes, we did 200 foot property owner notices, yes.
Good question.
We did the newspaper notices, 200 foot property owner notices, and we put the sign on the property.
Okay, perfect, that, that, that's helpful. But just to clarify, in the zoning changes requested, they could use this for other church uses, it doesn't, it's nothing restricting it to offices.
Right, right. Like I said, they were, they're looking at putting in a food pantry, and they could put the food pantry in there, it's just excess, I mean, they could hold classes over there, counseling or youth classes or, but I, the building's not that big.
Well, and I'm sure the, when it was a daycare, the children were very quiet out in the back, and I'm.
Absolutely.
Okay, those are all my questions. Anything else from anybody else? Okay, we have a, a motion and a second, all in favor? Shows to be unanimous. Okay, our next action item is consideration and possible action regarding a recommendation to city council for the requested zone classification change for 108 Whispering Pines Avenue to change from single-family residential to downtown district. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. We gotta talk about it.
Yep.
Second.
Okay. Aubrey, is there anything additional to add on this?
No, sir.
Okay. Brett, discussion?
Normally I was, I was against, this is the piece that was outside the boundary, right?
This is the inside.
Inside the boundary, oh, it's inside the boundary. It's already in the downtown, well, it's already previously in the downtown district, and it's, it's in the commercial area, everything around is commercial on the other side, so I'm, I'm in support of it.
So I'm kinda torn on these. I, I agree, this one's inside the, the dis, downtown district, if they were taken separately, I would have no problem with voting for this one to be.
They are separate.
Kind of.
We have two votes.
Yes.
They are, they aren't, yeah, I see what you're saying.
They are and they aren't, so. I, I acknowledge that the, the neighborhood that is adjacent is very leery of what's going in, they wanna know. I do think that, that being in downtown district, an original downtown district would, would probably sway my vote for this one to, to agree to the, the change. So, taking separately, yes, I would be in favor of this one.
Marcus, anything?
No, thank you.
Rich?
Yeah, I'm, I'm kinda with everyone else so far on this, the adjacent properties are already downtown district, this one is in the old, in the downtown district area, if you look at the map. I am sympathetic with homeowners across the street, that they are, their, their area, their, their street is becoming wider and more commercial, and I, I appreciate the concern, but it is across the street, and, and I'm, I'm gonna support this one going to downtown district, consistent with recently all the properties in that area that have switched.
Eric? Dick? Yeah, I'm, this is, this is harder than maybe, than it, than it looks, because I think we're all very concerned, and we put ourselves always as what would we do if we were living across the street, what would we do if we were living a mile away or five miles away, we always, everybody up here tries to look at all these from every different perspective, but I do see that it's, it's commercial at least right next to this property, and heading that way more and more. See if I had anything else, no. So we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Oh. We voted, we, it's, it's voted.
Yeah.
I, I believe we, yeah.
We all hear hands up?
You will, you will, I think.
You'll have another shot.
Yeah, I think we can call you up at the next one. But the vote was.
Seven zero.
Oh, well, I thought we did.
Sorry, what?
Becky, Aubrey, I'm looking to you, I, I look.
Let's vote.
Well then, are you gonna give him time to speak then, if we haven't?
So, what we're saying is, we missed, we missed the count of the vote, I glanced both ways, but I'm not gonna say I am certain I know exactly how everybody voted. So, we're gonna revote, is, Mary Kay, am I breaking any rules with that? Then I'm gonna call you up, sir. State your name one more time, please.
My name is Greg Crinian, and just a point of clarification, the application is to rezone both properties, not separately. That is how the application was turned in.
It's not, it's not posted.
I understand, but that's how it was turned in, so I just wanna make sure that you understood that's how it was turned in, just, just so you know.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we have a motion.
Brings up, I'm sorry, that brings up a point, that is a possibility that we will vote for one and against another, and if, if everybody loses on that, I mean, maybe we should hold off or, or, I mean, it sounds like the applicant isn't interested in, in that outcome, and.
Let me ask, is there a reason these were put, Aubrey, into two items on the agenda?
Because they are two separate tracks, so we noticed them, we put two signs out, they, I mean, they did write them on the same application, but, I mean, I treated them as two separate applications.
You would never put two tracks on one vote, and, and I can understand why, okay. That's just a misunderstanding by the applicant, okay.
I, I, come on, please. I will call you up, state your name one more time, please.
Jane Gibson, I just wanna say that the traffic is not across the street, the traffic is in our whole area.
The traffic is in our whole area, so please don't, don't say that it is across the street, so it's really not in our front yard, because it is. May I ask a question? Is that possible?
Yes, go ahead.
Could you please explain what the drainage requirements are for downtown district? Because that is one of our concerns. What is the drainage for building commercial in that area?
So they'll be required to meet the, we have design criteria, or design criteria for drainage. They'll be required to account for their drainage. I believe this property is, is it eligible for regional detention?
It's in our package.
That's what you're talking about, that does, us who live right there.
But they still, they would have to put storm drains in and collect their water and get it to a public system. So Whispering Pines would be the public system. They would have to get it to the street, which in turn goes to a regional detention system.
Which is what came into our homes at Harvey's. So please take that into consideration. The traffic is already horrendous there. We have a really difficult time getting in and out of our neighborhood. Going commercial is only going to hurt our neighborhood. Please take that into consideration.
Ma'am, can I ask you a question? Are you talking for yourself or for, for your whole community?
For my neighborhood.
So would that, would that be?
It's 24 homes, yes.
Everybody's, you're echoing everybody's sentiment.
Absolutely. Absolutely. I have another homeowner here, but yes, all 24 homes. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Okay, we have a valid motion and a second. And we're all in favor. It shows to be unanimous. Okay. Our next action item is consideration and possible action regarding a recommendation to city council for the requested zone classification change for 110 Whispering Pines Avenue to change from single-family residential to downtown district. Is there a motion to approve? Then I'll make the motion. I make a motion to approve.
I'll second it. You gotta, you gotta give the applicant a chance to discuss.
Okay, discussion. I'm going to save my comments. Brett?
This one gets me some heartburn. This is where I really wish the applicant would have done what Reese Church did and came in with the plan. Makes it so much easier. I knew we were going, I said this from three months ago, this, we're going to end up in this spot and then we're here. The other track, it was already originally in the downtown district, that was an easy call for me. This one has a house on it, it's deeper into the residential section along Whispering Pines. And, and, and the applicant did not bring forward a, a plan like Reese Church did. And, and so this one's, right now, I'm really on the fence on this one. So I'm going to hold until I hear further comments.
Okay, I guess the one thing I think about is city council approved moving this into downtown district. This is in downtown district property. And so what, what's the intent of a downtown district property? I mean, there may be lots of, lots of uses and intents, but this seems to be, in my mind, at least one of them that would be, fall into that, one of those intents. You've got a, you know, a property owner now that could literally have commercial on one of their pieces of property and then other, just a spot we, we got put in. I, I do agree that there was a, a path to make this an easier decision and it was chosen not to go that path for, I'm sure for very good reasons. It would have made things a little bit easier and smoother if it had gone down a path of getting the, the use of that property out in front. But with that said, you own the property, you can develop it the way you see fit and where, and what's allowed under our zoning requirements. So I, I actually am, am for changing the zoning classification. So with that.
I do have a, a comment. So when, whenever we voted on this one, which was five to one out of this against, one of the reasons was that it set a precedent for others to come in and want to be downtown district. And it, I read in this briefing that the property next to it, the 110 must be 112, is now requesting to be put into downtown district. So where does it stop? And, and I, I, is that, is that right?
No.
It said that the property on the other side.
Oh, no, it was, it was, it's a, it's a typo.
That's a cut and paste error.
It's, it's an error. It's, it's not, that's not correct.
Well, that's what I read in there.
You did read it, you read it exactly correct. It was a, it was a cut and paste error.
Yeah, it says the property north of the subject tract is currently zoned. Oh, no, yeah, that's, no, that's not correct.
Yeah, exactly the same words that came out from a long wait.
Okay, yeah.
All right, well, that one had me spun up, sorry.
Okay.
Because it was exactly why I voted against it in, in, in the previous meeting.
No, the boundary stops at 110, so the next tract would, would be 204 is not in the boundary and they cannot apply for downtown unless the boundary's amended again.
Bingo, yes. That, I think that's my exact point. So. I, I, I kind of feel like the decision was taken out of our, out of our court whenever it became downtown district. I also, so this one really bothers me, but I, my sympathies are, are with the neighborhood, but with it being down, now in downtown district, I, I just don't see how we can't move forward. But I sure want not to.
So what if we did not move forward, what, what implications?
It goes to council.
Yeah, so, I mean, council's already approved it, right?
Not the specific use.
So council can do what they want, though, right?
Right, correct. We're making a recommendation.
Hopefully they listen to our recommendation and understand our thinking, but, but yes. But they have the right to do anything that they choose.
Recommendation, no, right? Okay.
Lisa, anything else? Marcus, anything on this one?
Yeah, this troubles me as well. I mean, but I, and I didn't support the boundary expansion last time for the same reasons. But now the fact that this boundary does cover this property in this tract, I feel like, and, and I understand I have a vote and this is a recommendation to council, but considering that it was a six-zero approval from council, from what I understand, to extend the boundary, I will support this.
Oh, sorry, you do. We're right past you, sorry.
Obviously, I'm not going to say something popular here. I actually am very sympathetic with what Brett said. This, this property at 110 is now adjacent to a homeowner. In addition to being across the street, we don't have a plan. The plan could involve a two- or three-story building to meet downtown district requirements and go in next to the unsuspecting neighbor, and this is the last chance they have to stop it. And so I will be voting against this. I don't, I, I don't think it's right to not have a plan, not know what we're going to do and give the property owner carte blanche to do something that might be something we want to object to. So with 108, they have the land next to it and if it does something negative to them, they're kind of doing it to themselves. But for 110 next to 204, I'm, I'm a little more sympathetic. Without knowing what the plan is, I, I can't support going to downtown district zoning on this.
So a comment there confuses me if I can be disruptive here and trace back. So would we not have the opportunity to approve or disapprove the use of the property once us plan came forward?
We'll, we'll get to look at the site plan.
Get to look at the site plan, but the site plan needs to conform with the requirements of the downtown district as opposed to right now, it would need to conform with the requirements of single-family residential.
Okay.
And it's not even commercial shopping center. It is something that could be quite different than the neighborhood, significantly different.
That, that helps me understand your perspective.
Yeah, right. I mean, we should not be objecting to anything that's put in on downtown district on this property if we say we should zone it downtown district. I mean, that's, that's what we're saying, I, I believe.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I agree completely with Rich. That's the way I'm going to vote as well.
Okay.
I got one more thing.
Yes, sir.
The Harris family, the phenomenal family here in Friendswood, this awesome family, deep, deep roots. And I get it. But the first plan, zoning conference I went to, to the compliance course, the first thing they told me says, zoning goes with the land, not with the applicant. Said, never forget that. Goes with the land, not with the applicant. And this is why I strongly encourage, they came with a plan, they didn't do that. So we got a, a narrow piece of property, deep into residential, a four-story building could go there. And so that, that troubles me. I will not be in support of this and I'll save my other comments at the final, at the, we do a commissioner comment. So I'm not being, being supportive of this.
Okay, what other comments are we going to have?
No, something outside this, so.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. So I have nothing to add. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed? Motion fails. Five to two.
Mr. Chairman, do we want to discuss the recommendation memo like we were going to? Like the items that we want to highlight on council's recommend, recommendation memo?
I would like to think we could work that out separately, offline.
Okay. Just want to make sure. Okay.
Our next, our next item is consideration and possible action regarding future planning and zoning commission meeting date. Aubrey?
Our next regular meeting will be Thursday, June 27th. And then our first meeting in July will be July 11th. And I would like to remind everyone, this is our first night of our new schedule. So we had our public hearing and consideration of these zone change items. These same zone change items will be on city council's agenda for July 1st. They will have a public hearing similar to what we did tonight. And they will consider the items and we will forward our recommendation to them. So like I said, just wanted to remind everybody of that new process. July 1st is council's meeting.
What time would be?
7:00 PM.
It wouldn't go earlier because other things happen?
No, all the public hearings and ordinances are considered after 7:00 PM.
Anything else on?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay, next on our agenda are communications. Do any of the commissioners have anything that they wish to communicate? Suggestions for future agenda items or general comments or updates from liaison assignments? Marcus?
I did attend, after a bit of a hiatus, my liaison responsibilities this week. So there is a lot of business going on in the drainage district that I support. They had no actions or requests from us for, for anything. There is quite a bit of activity that you can find in their agendas. They approved the nominal things that they do, so nothing to report and they seem to be okay at the moment for our participation.
Thank you, Lisa.
And I did attend the Keep Friendswood Beautiful. They, they have a lot going on, especially in Stevenson Park. So you've probably seen some of their pollinator garden and ribbon cuttings and things like that. So I think they're pretty busy for spring and summer. It's a pretty neat group. So I'm glad to be on it.
Great, thank you, Rich.
For the third month in a row, I had a conflict for the FD-EDC meeting. I did miss it. Were you there, Aubrey? Anything you can report on that?
Yes, sir. They are moving forward with the proposed, or the lighting plan for the downtown district. They did not make any firm decisions. They're going to get some samples, but they are considering. So they hired, the lighting consultant came back with a, a more specific lighting plan, they had option A and option B. And so they ended up going with option A, so they did decide on a plan. So that plan is going to be poles that have a street light on one side and a pedestrian light on the other side. And then that, every other light will be the two lights. And then the other, other, every other light between that would just be a pedestrian light. So there's two different types of poles. The material of the pole is what they're kind of hung up on. They're going to get a sample, but they are lean, the number one choice they were leaning towards is a wooden pole. And they're actually, it, they actually come with a 30-year warranty, which the steel poles only came with like a five-year warranty and tend to fade over time. The lighting designer that was there at the time said, City of Houston's actually using some of those poles and they've actually gone to a lighter gray because they fade so bad. And then the third option was a faux wood, which were really expensive and, so it was surprising to go toward, but they're very unique, they would be unique to Friendswood. And then they have fixtures on them that are metal. So they will be discussing that again at the next FD-EDC meeting.
Does that mean there's going to be an ordinance change in our future to reflect that?
Possibly.
Okay. Thank you.
Brett?
Comments I was going to hold to hear, talk about, going back to the plan we just approved or did not approve. I don't know if it's possible for future that we can put in place where an applicant, in regards to downtown, has to come forth a plan before we make a decision. I don't know if that's a possibility, because, look, I'm all for downtown, I'm all for commercial growth, but when it gets that deep into residential, I sympathize with them. So it'd be nice if somehow we can enforce an applicant, they have to come forth some type conceptual plan before we make a decision. I don't know if that's even doable, but something we can talk about later on. Just my thoughts on that.
The only other thing that I was going to mention from my side. Rich and Aubrey and I have attended other planning and zoning commissions. Aubrey and I made the City of Pearland. Rich, Aubrey and I made the Nassau Bay Planning and Zoning, or Planning Meeting. So I wanted to, I'm just briefly, I know it's been a long, long evening, but I'm just going to really quickly hit these. The real takeaways, it really was an intent just to see what everybody else is doing and it's pretty much what we thought, really. It's very similar, very, very similar, but there are nuances for each of the different commissions that are out there. Everybody's dedicated, everybody takes it seriously, but there were some, some fairly subtle differences. We attended the Pearland Joint Public Hearing, a joint hearing, or, yep, and then a, a regional, or a regular meeting. So just, just to really quickly, there's only a couple, so I'm not going to take this too long. But the joint public hearing is really run more by the mayor of Pearland in there. So that was the kind of, and the mayor pro temp. And the zoning commission really didn't have a strong role. That was a little bit different and it got the job done equally well, but a little bit different. And one of the little subtle takeaways, when anybody public, the public came up and spoke, they gave their name and their address of where they lived. And I thought, well, that's interesting. But it did point out a few people that came in that didn't even live in the city that, that were commenting or could maybe, could have lived outside of the city. So I thought that was an interesting takeaway, something to, to think about later on, that that might be interesting to hear as somebody speaks where they're from.
So, so I just did like a really long thing on personal identify information and to have somebody speak their name and their address in a public forum.
Right, I was a little, I was a little uncomfortable with their full home address. I, I was, I, I understand completely.
That's considered PII right there and then you have to protect it.
Well, that, I was, that's why I said, yeah. I, I was a little uncomfortable, but, but just saying what city you live in, it might be interesting.
Or, or just a neighborhood instead of.
Sure.
The street.
Instead of a number.
But it was, it was interesting that, that they did. They, they also, when they asked for public comment, they always, anybody for or against, they asked three times. So they did it in triplicate for the same people. So it was this different way of running the meeting.
Did anybody not answer the first two times and spoke up the third time?
None. None. Went pretty fast. Their regular meeting, they only allow three excused absences for commissioners. And then in, in the next meeting or whenever.
Per year.
Per year, thank you, thank you very much. Yeah, you're right. And then, then they have to formally vote to excuse those absences. So that was, that was interesting. The one other takeaway was. The one other takeaway was that staff communications to commissioners were all BCC, blind copied, so that we never had to run, they don't have to run afoul or ever get concerned about somebody accidentally replying all. So that was another takeaway of, okay, maybe that's an opportunity, just logistics of the commission. Nassau Bay, there, as I said earlier, they're planning only. They were very similar. I don't know that I took away any big, the one big takeaway was their chairman had been on the Planning and Zoning Commission since 1978. And I, and it's, I couldn't get much past that one.
Term limits there, huh?
No, no, I knew what he was talking about. So anyway, Rich, anything else of note, or Aubrey, anything that, I'm sure I missed some other key things, but I just passed along general information about some of the activities. So, so, okay. Thank you. Next, our council liaison.
Only about 30 minutes worth, is that okay?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Is that Ron Cox? It looks like.
Looking for a place to have a speech, yeah. No, I just want to congratulate you all on your very first public hearing. I think that's awesome. I also would like to congratulate our three reinstated members, Dick, Joe, and Marcus. And then I would also like to introduce council member Trish Hanks. She's here observing us tonight, so I'm glad you all are on your best behavior. Thank you. No, just teasing. Thank you all very much. Proud of the job you all do.
Thank you. Staff comments, Aubrey, Beck, Aubrey?
Yes, sir. So I'm going to try to, since we're doing public, separate public hearings and things like that, I'm going to try to keep you all informed when the second readings of items that we forward on go through. So the, I just wanted to let you know that council approved all five of the ordinances that we worked on related to the downtown district changes, so those are all done. Then I also wanted to give you an update on the Texas Legislature. House Bill 852 was passed and effective May 21st, which prohibits cities from charging permit fees for residential dwelling units, new and alterations, based on value or cost of construction. So I am currently working on a whole new fee structure for our department. Us and the majority of the cities around here charge our fees based on value, and so a lot of cities are scrambling to get new fee structures. So hopefully we'll get that to council in July. House Bill 2439 has not been signed by the governor yet. The Senate and the House both passed it. That prohibits cities from regulating exterior building materials. So our community overlay district, our CSC district, our downtown, all of those ordinances could possibly be in jeopardy if that bill is signed. City council did pass a resolution to forward to the governor to request him to veto that. I think June 16th is the deadline for him to either sign it or veto it.
Does, does it pocket veto if he does nothing?
No, it actually approves.
It passes if he doesn't do anything?
Yes.
Okay, so he has to veto it before then for it to not happen?
Yes.
Thank you. June 16th?
June 16th, yes. House Bill 3167 prohibits cities from approving Platts with conditions, requires either approval or disapproval. So that's another one, has not been signed yet. And then the Texas State Board of Plumbing Examiners, there was a sunset clause on that board. It was not renewed by the legislature. Senate Bill 621 was proposed that would have transferred the licensing from the state board to Texas Department of Licensing and Regulation, and that was not approved either. So basically, we were all kind of holding our breath, because the legislature dismissed with no action, and so like as of September 1st, we were not going to have any plumbing licenses. Today, the mayor, or the governor extended the Texas State Board of Plumbing Examiners until May of 2021, under a disaster recovery, or I guess, authority that he has. So it has been extended to May of 2021, so they can take it up again at their next legislative session. So a little bit of breathing room there, so.
Anything else, Aubrey?
Nope, that's it.
Becky, anything? Mary Kay? Jeff, how are we?
I have one go back. I, I forgot. So in, at the Keep Friendswood Beautiful, they had given a grant to a neighborhood to redo their neighborhood's ride. I told them they probably had conditions for, for colors and materials, and I sent them to you.
Yes.
Did it come to you?
Uh, yes, Kim did email me. Thank you.
Okay. With that, they never leave this up here. We're adjourned.